Today is Monday, February 5th. We'll now call the City Council Regular Meeting to Order at 6:30 PM. Item number two, our roll call, we do have a quorum of council. Item number three are our pledge. Marcus, since you talked a lot, come up here and say that our pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Marcus. Item number four, our public comments. City Secretary, do we have any public comment requests?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, we do. Monica Fontenot Poindexter.
Wow, I'm surprised. I'm Monica Fontenot Poindexter. I thought I was under 7A.
Oh, okay. So you can wait till 7A.
I'd be glad to do that, thank you.
Anyone else?
No, Mr. Mayor, that concludes public comments.
All right. Item number six, our consent agenda. Six. Isn't it six?
Five.
Oh, item five, our staff report, city manager. I skipped you, sorry.
No worries. I'm gonna talk about the consent agenda. Just want to provide an overview of those items you have before you tonight. Item B being, one, to accept the quarterly investment report for the quarter ending on December 31st, 2023. As a side note, we continue to see favorable interest rates, so that's a good thing. Item C is to authorize a payment in the amount of $581,000 to TC Houston Industrial Development for the Part 890 Economic Incentive Agreement. This is the last payment for this incentive. Item D is to authorize the city manager to execute a contract for rate study and utility financial services for an amount not to exceed $90,400 for the Mustang Bayou service area. Item E is the second and final reading on an ordinance amending Chapter 74 Parks and Recreation of the Missouri City Code, amending regulations granting recognized sports association designation. This item was approved unanimously at the last meeting. Item F, second and final reading, amending Chapter 2 of the contract authority of the city manager for separations without monetary value. This item also was approved unanimously at the last meeting. Item G is the second and final reading of an ordinance to zone approximately 1,056 acres of land in SM2 to permanent zoning. One more, one more thing. I want, I don't think he's here. Oh, yes, he's here. Want you, join me in recognizing Joe's Abraham. He returns to us as the planning manager. He started with Missouri City as a planner one, and now he's returned home. So, great to have him on board, and I'm sure Jennifer is smiling all over the place for that. And then, another thing I'd like to point out is the Police Department has added five new officers to its ranks. They began on January the 29th, and just for the record, MCPD has 110 sworn officers. Early in 2023, they experienced a high of 31 vacant positions. Now, since each of you approved competitive wages, they are down to 15 vacancies for a vacancy rate of 15%. So that's major. Another highlight I'd like to point out, congratulations to Kelly and his team at the golf course for being named among the top 25 golf courses in Texas. This is a ranking to be appreciated, and we want to thank you. And lastly, we have a Missouri City Fire Department Prevention Division was granted the designation of Masterpiece Officer in Lieutenant Robert Williams. So we are doing major things and continuing to set the standard. So thank you.
All right. There's no need for council comments anymore. All right. Well, thank you. Thank you. Item six, our consent agenda. Does anyone want to wish to remove any item from the consent agenda? If not, if you're all in favor, motion. So we have a motion by Mayor Proton Klauser, seconded by Councilmember Boni. Seeing no one else with any questions, let's go ahead and vote.
Motion carries unanimously.
Item number seven, our public hearings and related actions, 7A.
7A is an ordinance to receive comments for or against a request by Monica Fontenot Poindexter, Chesterfield Development Services, for a PD planned development district on an approximate 0.34 acre tract of land to allow for the location of office warehouses and LC2 local retail district uses, and to the extent such zoning deviates from the future land use and character map of the comprehensive plan to provide for an amendment therefrom.
All right. Thank you. I'll now go ahead and open the public hearings for item 7A1. City Secretary, do we have any requests to speak on this item?
Mr. Mayor, the applicant has signed up to speak. Would you like for her to speak now or during the action item?
You can speak now.
Okay. Monica Fontenot Poindexter. Ms. Poindexter, please state your name and address for the record, and also please adhere to the three-minute time limit.
Hi, I'm Monica Fontenot Poindexter, 315 Addicks Howell, Houston, Texas. I am here to represent the owner, Sir John Joseph, who is here. He owns other property on the same street in addition to the property that we are requesting a zone change for. On this particular property, there are two, it's actually on Rothwell. There are two lots side by side. He wants to use that. It's zoned as LC2, which allows for commercial use. In addition to that, we are expanding that, requesting for a PD, a planned development to add warehouse use capability. And so for that, that's why we're here today. And so with this property, he's going to put one reserve, one building, one unit on this space, and he would like your favorable consideration. So across the street, it's vacant, there's high brush, there's also a church kind of cattac corner to the property. There are other uses on the property on that street, partially residential, and there's also a water tower at the end of the street. It's a very short street, it's about 800 feet in length, it's just off of Fifth Street as well. So he would like your favorable consideration so that he can have warehouse space to store some of the items that they are going to use for shipping. There's not going to be a high volume of traffic on the street. He's going to provide for detention and other requirements that are needed in the area, but bottom line is, he's going to develop it. He's going to put lights up around it so that the neighbors feel safe. He'll have enough of a buffer on either side of the residential units. So in order to build, he has to do a zone change, whether he's going to do it for residential purposes or for commercial purposes, based on the way, you know, the ordinance is written at this time. So again, I'm here for questions, if you have any, and we'd like your favorable consideration for this request. It was approved at the P&amp;Z meeting, but I know we have two readings, and we're hoping, you know, to meet what your vision is for this property so that we can be great citizens. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. City Secretary, do we have any other comments?
No, Mr. Mayor, that concludes the public hearing.
Okay. If there's no further comments, we'll now close the public hearing, 7A1. And 7A2.
An ordinance of the City of Missouri City, Texas, changing the zoning classification of 0.34 acres of land from LC2 Local Retail District to PD Planned Development District Number 120, describing said 0.34 acres of land, regulating and restricting the development and use of property within such PD Planned Development District, amending the zoning district map of the City of Missouri City, providing for an amendment to the comprehensive plan, providing for repeal, providing a penalty, providing for severability, and containing other provisions relating to the subject.
All right. Thank you. We have a presentation by Ijima Edwards, our planner. Go ahead, ma'am.
Good evening, Mayor and Council.
Good evening.
Well, you heard the applicant this evening, so I won't repeat everything that she said. Tonight, you are hearing the proposal to zone two properties to a PD to allow for an office warehouse use and LC2 uses. Currently, LC2 does permit office use, however, not warehouse. The warehouse will assist the owner with their online business that they currently have, and that will allow the storage for the merchandise as well as office. Currently, the proposal is not in com, I'm sorry, in conformance with the comprehensive plan of 2017, and the future land use map does identify the property as a suburban character, residential character district. Planning and zoning provided a positive recommendation, considering that the development will provide improvement to the overall area. And that concludes my presentation.
All right. Thank you. We have some council members that are in line to speak. I'll start with Councilmember Boni.
Thank you, Mayor. So basically, the first time it came before P&amp;Z, it was a negative recommendation, not only from staff but from the P&amp;Z, and then the applicant came back. What were, if you could, just share what the original reasons were for the negative recommendation and what changes were made from then to the second appearance before P&amp;Z that allowed P&amp;Z, I guess, to consider it for a positive recommendation?
For staff, the concern was that the development, the way that the conditions of the street, the roadway now, would not support the size of the development. For the Planning and Zoning Commission, they just needed additional information, they didn't have enough information at the time, to make a formal recommendation. So they, the applicant wanted to come back and provide additional information, site plan, to assist with their decision.
Yeah, so I was looking at the meeting as well as the comments in staff's memo, and it mentioned that P&amp;Z made it, gave a positive recommendation, but also indicated that the individuals, the adjacent neighbors, were supportive of this particular project as well. I didn't see any negative feedback as far as the individuals who were sent the notification that this was being proposed. So I just want to know, you know, if this is going to cause any traffic challenges, is this gonna have any issues or impact on? I drove by this past week to take a look at the property, and it was, I mean, that area definitely needs some improvement significantly, and so I do know that this is a deviation from the site, I mean, the master plan, but it also is something that's needed in that area to improve it significantly, especially considering that on that street, we shared with Fort Bend County, also Stafford, and some of those areas have dilapidated and not improved. So anything over there, not to just say we want to put anything there, but I don't see this as a negative addition to the Fifth Street portal.
I understand that. Recognizing Councilmember Brown Marshall.
Thank you, Mayor. Ijima, if you don't mind, could you please put the presentation on the screen?
Yes, yes, yes.
And if we could go to, I think it's gonna be, well, slide 44 for me. And I guess while we wait to get the slide, I can start with some of my questions. Inside of staff's negative recommendation that staff sent over, it also stated that they had concerns with a change in the type of project that would be essentially sitting in between two single-family homes. Is that still a concern of staff?
It's more of the size of the project and knowing that the zoning will remain with the site, and if at any time the owner outgrows the office space, that it will still allow warehouse uses and the type of traffic or what will go into that warehouse is the concern being next to residential in the roadway.
I guess for me, this one was kind of tricky because this is one of those where it was zoned LC2 in 1995, and, you know, as the applicant has stated, they now, as it stands now, can place something there that would be commercial. But it just strikes me as odd that we would put a warehouse right in between two homes. On the left side and on the right side, there are homes. I didn't see inside of the P&amp;Z report where those two owners were present or that they made a comment that they were for it. Did I overlook that? I thought I read that maybe because they didn't show up that that was why they were for it.
I don't recall, I don't recall any comments.
Yeah, I just couldn't find where they were in support of it, so I took it to mean that planning and zoning took the stance that since no one was present, that maybe they were in acceptance of this type of deal. My second concern with this is, are there any future plans to improve or widen the street?
I would leave that to Public Works.
Public Works. Present.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. The question was, any plans to widen the street? No, not on Fifth Street. Rothwell Street is a small residential street with open ditch. Currently, there are no plans.
Okay. And based on, because we do have a lot of land still left of it, do you foresee that one day that we could possibly have some type of connectivity going out the other direction past the water towers? Or would this always just be one little, you know, narrow street as it currently is?
I think there are some constraints. There is some drainage channels there, so there's some wetlands there, so it'll be a challenge to establish a connectivity south on Rothwell. So I think the major access will still remain Fifth Street, and Rothwell is a street that feeds into some residential neighborhood as well.
Okay. One more question for you, Shashi, please. Do you foresee any drainage issues with this particular property? How will he drain it?
One of the challenges we're experiencing here is we're getting close to the regional detention capacity. I think the applicant mentioned they're gonna put onsite detention, so they're gonna hold that excess water, they're gonna generate and release it at pre-existing conditions. So, yes, there are gonna be drainage challenges, but they're gonna be, they're proposing onsite detention to mitigate that.
Okay. I think that's my final question for you at this time. Thank you so much, Shashi. And my final question will go back over to the planning, over to you. In terms of this being a piece of land that was zoned back in 1995, I don't know which one was there first. Were the homes there first? I guess I should have looked, but it just, it's not making sense to me. Do we, do we foresee that we would be in a position to even get this zoning changed? And I'm in total agreement that we need something there to enhance this area. We also need some code enforcement on this particular street as well, but I'm just not, it's not sitting well with me on a warehouse right now. So I'm just trying to see where we're going with this.
I believe the residential portion was added to allow for a housing development that is there. I believe it was LC2, and then it was zoned as residential to allow that housing.
The concept site plans, the conceptual plans, if you'll move to the next slide. One more. I mean, it looks great, but the part that you don't really get to see inside of this is that there are two homes, left and right of this. So I don't really know if that's really what we want our city to look like, or I don't even know if that would even start a precedent in the city. Now, we do, will he be required to put this sound wall around the property as well?
Yes, the masonry wall will go on the side that abuts residential.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Recognizing Councilmember Rollis.
Those were good points, Councilmember. So I drove by as well, and that street really needs an identity. It's got residential, it's got LC2. I drove by it, I saw kids riding, and I envisioned a warehouse there, and whatever we do today could mean LC2 will come, and how would those kids play? I do find it odd, like I envisioned having my neighborhood where I have a house and then a big warehouse next to me. If you look at this proposal, it's 5,000 square feet, which would sit next to two homes, one's that's 940 square foot, the other one's 988 square foot. This thing would tower over, you know, these buildings. So in my opinion, I think we as a city need to help develop this street. Maybe the Economic Development Director can put together some plans and, you know, put an identity of the street together. I think it might be in CDVG, I'm not sure. If not, it's on the fringe. I believe it's in a turf, so we may have some tools to help build this street to be safe and to be a part of our community, not some abstract warehouse home stuff. So those are my comments.
Recognizing Councilmember Wright.
Thank you, Mayor. I've got several questions and concerns. Ijima, on the slide before this one, where it kind of lays out the landscape, it says on here, eight-foot fence. It doesn't state that it's masonry or whatnot.
It will be masonry, minimum eight foot, minimum eight feet masonry wall.
So an eight-foot masonry fence will go around the rear and basically both sides, which means it blocks, not only does this building tower over the two homes sitting on the side of it, but then there's a huge fence that blocks their view down the street. So if their kids are out there, I'm over there all the time. These kids are in that street constantly. So, one, it blocks the view, two, it hinders families being able to see their kids riding their bicycles down that street. I'm not, I'm very concerned about a commercial building sitting in the middle of two homes where there's a lot of children in those, both those homes right there. And I see potential public safety issues there, and then the road is not that wide. And so there's, and then, of course, the other side is full of, you know, a lot of brush and overgrownness. And so has, have, I know Public Works says they don't have any foresight of developing this street. I'm concerned about what type of traffic is gonna be coming in on that particular street. And they said that this is a warehouse for storage for, I guess, their supplies, what type of supplies and what type of traffic? Does this mean 18-wheelers? Does this mean large-size U-Hauls? Is this trailers coming in there? And if so, big trucks? How are they gonna turn around in that area?
That'll probably be a question for the applicant.
Are they here?
Mm-hmm, yes.
Yes, the owner's here also.
Can y'all come to the podium? Hello? Can you tell us your name and?
My name is Sir John Joseph.
Okay.
Okay. And this could be a small warehouse, basically used for clothing, online, e-commerce. There's no big truck or coming to that side.
So there's no trucks that'll be driving on the street?
No, mostly e-commerce, that's what we're doing.
And for those that's not familiar with e-commerce, what does that mean? As far as, are you gonna have delivery trucks?
We will deliver to the post office or FedEx. We take, end of the day, we take our products to the FedEx.
And I understand it. My question is, the transportation aspect, is this, these trucks are these trailer-type vehicles when you're bringing the supplies in to store at your warehouse?
Small mini van. Because both houses are there between, on the side, they are using as a mechanic place. They are not just house itself. They, both houses are mechanic places. You see, like a 10, 15-car sitting on both sides of the houses.
Okay, and I?
Only three houses there.
Thank you. My other question, do you have any flammable that you'll be, anything that's flammable that you'll be storing?
No, just clothing, that's it.
Clothing?
Yes. Sports clothing.
Okay. And then, what are your hours of operations for that particular considered facility?
This is a project for my daughter and myself, just a family business. So we just basically go for a few hours, just pack our clothes, whatever the order, we look at the online order, just go there and pack it and to ship it to the warehouse, I mean, to the FedEx process at the end of the day. Just maybe three, four hours work, that's it.
So?
Basically, we just need a storage place to keep the clothes. It don't come every day. The material comes maybe once in six months or three months.
So you don't have staff that'll be there on a daily basis?
No, we just, myself, my wife, and my daughter, that's it.
Okay, okay. So no after?
No, there's no pickup or no delivery, just we are doing the delivery to the post office or the FedEx.
Okay, all right. Thank you. That's my questions for you.
All right.
For him. Can you tell me why, or, I didn't, I didn't read the notes from P&amp;Z about this particular project, I read over all this, but what was their reasoning of why this was favorable, gave a positive recommendation to put a commercial, large building in the middle of two homes?
Due to the condition of the area now, they were considering the improvement that the development will bring, as well as, you know, how everything looks, you know, bring development that will complement or help bring up the neighborhood currently, so they were looking more on that aspect. And that there is no current development coming there now, through that area now, so hopefully this will start that process.
Okay, so, do you, is there anything on record that shows that these homes, the residents on that street, were notified about this project?
We can provide that, yes, they were notified.
I mean, is there anything I can see now? Because I have to potentially vote tonight.
Let me see if it was in the packet.
Because I didn't see anything in the packet.
Actually, I'm sorry.
You got no responses back from the residents?
Not from what I.
Was it sent out in English and in Spanish?
English, I know.
Huh?
English, I do know, yes.
Because the residents over there are of the Latino descent, and they may not speak English. So that's also a concern if they were notified in their native language. And I'm very concerned about this project. It's not, I love development, yes, we want economic growth, but we want in the right places for our residents. And I see a lot of concerns with this, and I see a lot of potential negative kickback for us putting this big giant commercial. And then, what happens 10 years from now if that owner decides to sell that land, sell that property, and somebody wants to turn into a mechanic shop, an official one, or a lumbercutting business, you know, and put something like that different than just everyday clothes and shipping and things like? So I see the long-term negative impact on this, and I'm not, I'm not favorable for this particular project. That ends my comments, Mayor.
All right. Thank you. Jim, I do have a question. Go back to the picture. Not that picture, the land, right there. So across from this, what is that area's zone for?
Across is zone for LC3.
LC3, right? Okay. And this is the street that ends at the water tower, right?
Yes.
Okay, so that, basically, I've had the opportunity to drive also over there, and I've noticed that the, it looks like a house on the, on this side, I don't know what the, the right side of, after 1927, it's really a mechanic shop. Because I've seen them, all they do is they're bringing people, bringing cars and bringing over. And what this picture also doesn't really show is that area, if you look at, all the way from Pac. way from Parker Lane down on Fifth Street, people are selling these homes and start building these warehouses all throughout that area. So I see that it's coming through, that whole area is becoming, not on the Stafford side, some of it on the Stafford side, but some of it on the Missouri City side also that's coming back and forth. I am in favor of this project is because I think when you have these type of, because on Fifth Street, everything facing Fifth Street and Rothwell Streets, there are potential buyers looking to buy it and to turn it into, if it's under LC3, they want a commercial there anyway. So you, pretty much, the big, the major traffic that you have going on this street is if anyone that's going to that water tank. And cars that are coming in, in and out for that mechanic shop. That is truly a mechanic shop, and then you see it if you go out there during the evening time and nighttime, there's more cars in there than a typical workshop that you have. The only thing I've seen, to me, it looked like a resident, residential, is that very first house facing Fifth Street or facing Rothwell Street on that corner. I don't even know where the subject site, which, the left side of 1923, as it's written up there, that also has people randomly coming in and out. So this area is being, maybe there might be one or two homes that are there, but even to the south or towards Cartwright of that tower, there's people looking at commercial development in there as well. So, and one of my questions is, so when, when you send this out, do we have a policy that we send it out in Spanish, and Vietnamese, and Indian, and Chinese, and all of that?
No, we do not.
We do not have that?
No.
So what language do we send out the notices?
State law doesn't have a language specification, but we do send out the notices in English.
In English?
Yes.
So can we change that policy?
If the council would like to expend the additional funds to translate those types of notices, certainly.
Okay, so, but today, as it exists, it's a state law, which means we send them out in English to anybody and everybody throughout the city?
Within 200 feet of that property.
So the 200 feet of that property were notices being sent?
Yes, 200, we go up to 250, yes.
Okay, so was there any, during the P&amp;Z meeting, was there any comments from any public that came there in, against this project?
I don't recall, now, I could be wrong, but I don't recall that. If I'm wrong, it's been a little bit, but I don't recall a negative recommendation.
There were none?
Oh, okay.
Was there any in favor or in negative?
Please step to the podium.
Yeah. There's one in favor. Jennifer? Jennifer? Because I just learned that from Councilmember Morales said that there was one in favor.
I think I remember one.
That there was one in favor?
Yeah.
Any written, any written protest or support, we would include in the packet to P&amp;Z if we receive it before the P&amp;Z meeting, and then in the council packet. So if there's nothing in the council packet, we don't have anything written that's been submitted.
Okay, all right. Thank you so much for that information. And I guess, lastly, my question would be, I would assume, because of the water tower, would be for Shashi. So thank you. That water tower over there, I know that it recently got painted, and, so is that something that will remain there for long term?
Yes, sir. My idea is it will remain, it's not the city's, it's the Quail Valley Utility District's water tower.
It is?
Yes.
But we have the Missouri City sign on it?
Sometimes they're nice enough that they put the Missouri City logo, yes.
Okay, hey, that's all right. So that street dead ends on, well, the water tower today?
Yes, sir.
All right, okay. And the plan for the future is the same?
You know, our typical standard now is a street with a curb and gutter, which is having the traditional curb. This street does not have that, it's an open ditch system. As of now, we don't have any plans to rebuild that road or convert it into a curb and gutter, which would be the standard city street.
Okay, all right. Thank you, sir. All right, Jim, thank you, no, I'm sorry, thank you. So it was a, during that time, for, was it a unanimous vote on this from P&amp;Z?
Yes, it was unanimous.
Second time it was.
Second time, yes.
Second time it was? And, and I know Councilmember Bonney asked us to what changed, I mean, was there anything changed, or they just wanted the area to develop?
Yes, that was mainly it.
That's what it was?
Yes.
Okay, I yield back, Councilmember Morales.
I'm in agreement that this area needs to be developed. It's in our, you know, it's, I think she, Aijima, said it's residential, right? As a residential component?
Yes, yeah.
So, I want to know how we can help shake this into a corridor. Like we talked about before, City Manager, is there something we can do to create a district here, right? Is there something we can do special to incentivize these homes to become commercial and shake that as a commercial corridor, not to have this mismatch? That's not who we are in Missouri City. We're trying to prevent this. So if this were to come back some other time with a bigger plan, I would say, yeah, let's do it. But right now, it's just messy on paper. My only question I have is, if he chose to move across the street where it is LC3, he still would need a PD though, because it's warehouse?
Right, right.
Okay. Okay, that was my question, thank you.
Recognizing Councilmember Bonney.
Thank you, Mayor. You know, in listening to a lot of the comments, you know, it kind of brings me back to what I've been saying all along, that we need to, sooner than later, have some conversations around our zoning, review and reform, potential reform, as well as looking at our comprehensive plan. Right now, we're not there, and so nothing will stop this, this individual landowner from putting anything there that currently fits under LC2. So if the desire is to have something that is different than commercial, that's not going to happen, because LC2 is that. If you could, Aijima, could you just speak to a few of the, well, before I ask that question, they're seeking to go from LC2 to PD, which is just, they want to keep LC2 but add warehouse uses.
Yes.
We can put parameters around the PD if we so choose in voting for this, correct?
Mm-hmm, yes.
So whatever we would like to see that would protect that area, protect those alleged homeowners in the area, I don't know who's living there, not, I heard the applicant state that they're being used as businesses right now. So I don't know that to be true or not, but whatever the case may be, we can put parameters in, in our decision, if we so chose to pass this, that would protect that area and put certain things that we would like the applicant to include.
Yes, sir.
All right. So my question on the LC2, could you talk about some of the uses? You mentioned earlier that office space, but what other things can they put there as part of LC2?
Okay, just to list off a few, anything that's allowing other zonings, as well as car wash, a bank, candy, commercial indoor recreational, copying, photograph, grocery store, meat market, health and physical fitness centers, jewelry stores, restaurant, cafeteria, cafe, radio, television, electronics sales use, sports, sporting goods, furniture stores, tailor clothing, veterinarian, and musical instruments, and SGP, and uses that are permitted in LC1 and LCO and LC.
Thank you. And I only ask that she share that with us in that, right now, this is a, to me, as presented, a low-traffic, low-usage warehouse, and something that she just indicated could be put there without council's approval. And so I just think this is the best use of that area's land, and this is a low-risk development in the area, and something that would significantly improve, an area that is in desperate need of, of improvement and renovation and additions like this. I do, though, agree with you, Councilmember Morales, that we need to definitely look at our zoning, but to me, that's a more, a bigger discussion across the city, not just in the Fifth Street area. But I, I am a proponent of if we can create some sort of a district that could help improve that area and focus on it, just like we do Texas Parkway Cartwright, that would be great. But I don't see this as a means to hold up something that could, that was approved unanimously by our P&amp;Z, and that's something that could improve this particular area.
All right, thank you. Recognizing Councilmember Riley.
Aijima, what is the land zoned right next to the 1923?
LC2. So going up from, from the 1927 on up to Fifth Street is LC2. It's just a small portion on the, like, the south end that's residential.
So even the homes that sit there, they're zoned as LC2?
Yes.
These are residential? These residential houses that are sitting there, they're zoned LC2?
LC2, LC- I don't think, we don't have that.
Yeah, I'm looking at the Rothwell.
Mm-hmm.
So where you have 1927-
Unless it's LC3.
1923, and then there's a vacant lot right next to that. What is that zoned?
And I'm sorry, I don't have my, oh, I'm sorry, hold on. I know it's a commercial.
Okay. Okay. And then the house next to that one, is that zoned LC, or is that zoned residential?
It's LC3. It's LC3 going towards Fifth Street, because it becomes more intense. It's LC2 going away from Fifth Street with a residential. Any residential use there is considered non-conforming. So the zoning has been in place since, you know, the early 90s, 80s, but any residential use, any residential structure is non-conforming.
Okay, so the two, so then, if these houses are operating as businesses, are they, are they within their rights to do that?
So if they're operating as businesses, they should have been issued a CO and registered, you know, with the city?
Yeah.
So I would venture to say that they may not be operating in accordance with city requirements. They would have to go through that review process. Any kind of, any kind of car mechanic use, all of that requires LC3 or higher. So that zoning may not be aligned with what that use is as described.
But these two homes right here are zoned to be able to have homes there residential?
Non-conforming, meaning that the structure itself, as long as it's being used for a residential purpose, will continue for a residential purpose. There's a portion going towards the water tower site-
Mm-hmm.
-that was zoned for single-family residential, so that is a residential use in a residential zoning district. So anything that's not in a residential zoning district that is a residential structure or a residential use, if it goes through significant damage, or disrepair, or abandonment, then that nonconformity may be lost.
Okay, and so my other question is, because it's been mentioned that these homes are operating as mechanic shops, or alleged mechanic shops, have we had code enforcement go over and address that? If, because if they're, if they're not actual residential, I, when I go over there, it's their, their family and their children out there in the yard, kids are playing, riding their bicycles.
Right.
So it gives the perception that this is someone's home.
Yeah, and I can, I can tell code enforcement makes frequent visits out to that site. I'm not sure of any active cases or investigations going on, but they do make frequent visits out there.
Okay, and so, I would like to just pose this to City Manager, is to take a look at this particular area, and if, if this is an area that needs to be addressed in zoning, where we zone this as a different classification to utilize this space more productively, I think we need to really identify that, so that we don't have developments like that. I'm all in favor of things being improved. My biggest concern, whether it's one home, or two homes, or 300 homes, that this project sits in the middle of someone's home. And the children are still a factor, and they are still a concern for me. And so I don't think that this is a good location for this particular project. And I know something commercial can go there, but this building, is there any, any opportunities for them to reduce the height of the building? Because to make it fit a little bit better, to look a little bit better, in that, this is a very tall building that sits over two little bitty, you know, older homes. So are there any opportunities for that?
Yes, yes, and part of the recommendation, the landowner's recommendation, was for that reason, so your zoning districts are set up based on the intensity and the type of development. So typically, what you see with warehouse development, your setbacks, your landscaping, your screening are all set up to accommodate the types of structures, buildings that would be constructed there. So the, the landowner's recommendation that went forward was for that purpose, in that it's too intense for that street, that roadway. However, you do need to modify those setbacks in order, if you're going to allow for a structure of that size, or you should.
But as of now, they're not changing this.
What's presented in the draft ordinance before you would be to apply the LC2 regulations, so LC2 setbacks, LC2 development regulations, and allow for that. LC2 allows for a height of maximum two stories or 35 feet.
Mm-hmm, okay, thank you.
Recognizing Councilmember Morales.
If, if this is approved tonight, then we kind of kickstart what this corridor could look like. So I want to get it right, right? So within the PD, Jennifer, is there anything else that we need to do to make it kind of a standard going forward?
Sure, development regulations.
Yeah.
Because what you have before you is, is general LC2. And so to the question that was proposed, the change from the first to the second, is the original application included two buildings on two lots, and trying to maximize those two lots. They consolidated that down into one. So things like that, it's not necessarily spelled out unless you adopt the site plan, you know, and adopt setbacks that will further protect those properties, you know, on either side. Those are the kinds of things that you can adopt with this PD ordinance that provides some flexibility to be able to conduct business, but then protects that area as well.
Okay, and it's also the start of possibly other LC2 purposes coming in, which means that we're not ready for that road. And so we need to start thinking about, today, if this passes, we need to think about what we're going to do with that road.
Right.
Mayor, I always, especially family-owned businesses, this is a tough one for me. I would vote no tonight, but yes tomorrow, if we had a plan on how we could shape this to, for this guy to be successful, but to make every one of those other lots be successful. So if we can come back with a plan, maybe Herman can put a plan together for us and say, hey, here's what we can do. I'm all in, and this guy will be the champion of this neighborhood, because he built it, right? Based on his, on his vision. So those are my last comments.
Yeah, thank you. So, across the street from 1923 and 1927 here is LC3, right?
Yes.
So they can have a gas station?
Yes.
Literally across the street?
LC3, LC3 allows for that.
Okay, so if someone comes in and buys that, even a corner of the lot, right there, across the street I'm talking about? Or in the middle, they can put a gas station, right?
Well, so across the street at the intersection is the church. So the, the church is kind of, I don't know if you can make out those blue lines, but if you follow-
Jennifer, I'm talking about Rothwell across the street from 1923 and 27.
So Rothwell, right at the intersection, is accounted for on the church. Separate, from that is LC3. The likelihood of a gas station going not at the intersection, from a, you know, just for a development standpoint, diminishes. Not impossible, but it diminishes.
All right, but my question to you is, not what, what if, technically?
The landowner's would permit a gas station.
Permit, which means this city council today cannot do nothing to prohibit someone from coming there, building a gas station in the middle of that road?
From a landowner's perspective, right?
Right.
Correct.
Right?
Correct.
Okay, so with that being said, I think this whole area is redeveloping on its own, and we're making assumptions on council without knowing facts of whether these are independent businesses that are running, you know, next door or not. But it's, it's really an assumption. But I think the corridor, one of my counterparts just talked about, the plan for the corridor, if you go down on Fifth Street, past Lexington, and you see on the right-hand side, it's all being changed, one by one, into developments such as this. So I, I agree with the fact that maybe we can look at, this is not going to be a Park 890, but at the fact that eventually homeowners are selling these lots, if not, they're rundown, they're buying it. And we can send our code enforcement all day long, they will be working on that Rothwell Street all day long. They're not going to be, get to go to anywhere else. So I think with this such a development here, if we have the opportunity to get into, because on ripe- if we have the opportunity to get into, because on right, in front of the water tower, in the middle of the road on 1092, not in the exact corner, there's another gas station that is there now. So to your point, not at the corner, you can have it in the middle. So I think if we can look at into this project to see how it's scaled, the scaling back that Councilmember Moni had talked about, and within to, because the rest of it today, I think when this building pops up, I think you'll have potential buyers that will be looking to take this area and grow this area into a traffic, building more of a business in that particular corridor and area. Because unless, if we have a developer that's going to come in and buy that whole area and put in homes, then yes. Otherwise, it will sit just like that. And for a long term, until someone actually comes in with the money and to spend the money and put the money, their money, not city council's money, or city's money, or taxpayers' money, their money on the street and started to change in the landscape of that, it will not change. So for me, I'm in supportive of this project just so that I just want to make sure as we move forward, if the vote is yes, that we're, that your department and looking at all of the parameters around this to make sure that it's secure and for others as well. And then also to making sure that everything that they need to be set through the process should be adhered to that, you know, within the PD. Thank you. I yield back, Ron Marshall.
Thank you, Mayor. So in reading the report, one of the things that struck out to me is that the proposed zoning amendment is not in conformance with the goals of the 2017 comp plan. And we've, all of us have all talked about that the comp plan is outdated. In your opinion, Jennifer and Eijima, in today's time, what would the comprehensive plan say that this land would be?
It's.
In today's time?
In today's time? A suburban character.
Suburban character. So warehouse suburban character to you?
Residential.
Residential suburban character.
Correct.
Okay. I'm of the, in agreement with Councilmember Marulis, that this is an opportunity for us to decide what we want this to look like. I know I've had conversations with you, Ejoys, in regards to going through and finding a way to protect our corridors to give us an opportunity to shape them for what they look like. Mayor is correct in that down the street and in different areas, certain developments are coming in and those developments are shaping what that area looks like. Well, you know, 15 years ago, we didn't realize that Highway 90 was going to totally develop into all warehouses. We let one come in and then they all came in. So if that's what we want to continue to do, instead of trying to seize an opportunity to see if we can do something different, then that would be the vote of the body. But my question still lies with you guys, in today's time, what would this be? I'll yield.
Okay. Recognizing Councilmember Boni.
Thank you, Mayor. I think that in lieu of a potential passage, if we are going to vote to move this forward, I know this is two readings. And this being a PD, I think it would be a good opportunity and time to talk about some of the things we would like to see in the PD and things that we would like to ensure, you know, are a part of this PD so that, you know, once it's approved, of course, we can add stuff at the second reading as well if we think through it. But I know I heard brick mason rewall, making sure that that's there. But I wanted to make sure that it's the current standards of what we have across the city, you know, as what we require. Also, I heard something about how tall it would be. Is the proposed development one or two story?
One.
One story, okay. Well, that solves that problem. And then, you know, I guess make sure that there's proper and adequate lighting in the area and landscaping for that. And is there a way that we can also incorporate that? I know that it's LC2 with the added office warehouse uses, but can we restrict certain types of entities, right? As part of this PD? So no liquor stores, no, well, I think we could kind of go through the list of LC2 and LC1 offerings and indicate that. So to prevent any future, if they sell it, if, you know, they change their minds and want to do something different, we can put in that PD what it is that we would not want to be in there as strictly, you know, warehouse use, you know, if that's what they're indicating that they want to use it for. So I don't know all of that list right now that I could just give you, but I can definitely provide it at the next meeting.
Okay. And we can take these comments as well and we'll work with legal to amend the ordinance that's presented to you all tonight to present, excuse me, a different version of that ordinance at your next meeting. And then if that doesn't cover everything, then we can continue to work with them on making those modifications.
All right. Thank you. I don't see anyone else on the queue, so is there a motion? It's been a motion. Is there a second? There's been a motion. Is that your second? So there's been a motion by Councilmember Boni, seconded by Mayor Protem Klausser. Seeing no one else on the queue, let's go ahead and vote.
The motion fails order three.
Thank you. Item number 7A3.
A public hearing to receive comments for or against a request by Chad Mills to amend PD Plan Development District Number 85 to remove an approximate 6.969 acre tract of land and to amend PD 83 to amend, to add an approximate 6.96 acre tract of land to allow for an outdoor storage yard, covered manufacturing area, and office warehouse space. And to the extent such zoning deviates from the future land use and character map of the comprehensive plan to provide for an amendment therefrom.
Okay, thank you. I'll now open the public hearing for item 7A3. Does the Secretary do we have any requests to speak on this item?
No, Mr. Mayor, we do not.
Okay, if there's no further comments, we'll go ahead and close the public hearing, item 7A3. 7A4.
An ordinance of the City of Missouri City, Texas, amending PD Plan Development District Number 85, excluding a 6.97 acre tract of land from PD Plan Development District Number 85, describing said 6.97 acres of land, changing the zoning classification of said 6.97 acres of land excluded from PD Plan Development District Number 85 to PD Plan Development District Number 83, regulating and restricting the development and use of property within PD Plan Development District Number 83, amending the zoning district map of the City of Missouri City as adopted by ordinance number 0811 on January 19, 1981, as amended, providing for repeal, providing a penalty, providing for severability, and containing other provisions relating to the subject.
Thank you. There's a presentation by Jennifer Gomez.
Yes. Good evening again, Mayor and Council.
Good evening.
This is a doing a lot and I'm going to try to summarize it for you all. The actions that are being presented in the ordinance involve two plan development districts that were approved in 2012 over in the South Cravens area. It is just north of the Pine Meadow subdivision. PD 85 is all of the land coming from South Cravens going to the west, where adjacent to Pine Meadows, immediately adjacent to the Pine Meadow subdivision. PD 83 is just north of that going towards Highway 90A. PD 83 is where the Millis Construction Development has developed a two-story office building where it houses their construction business. They relocated here around 2012 when they constructed this building from Sugar Land to this area. If you haven't seen their building and their facility, we always brag that it's a very nice development. We wish it was along Highway 90 and more so more prominent in view. However, they've done well with their business and they're looking to expand. So they're looking to acquire this additional acreage that currently is within the boundaries of PD 85. So the area that's outlined in red on the screen is the area that they are looking to take out of PD 85 and expand into their PD 83. What they're looking to do is in two parts. They're looking to add more office square footage. What you have is different versions in what's looked at on the screen as phase two, where they show two buildings, three buildings, four buildings. They haven't identified specific tenants for potential office use. So those are concepts of what it could look like with a single tenant for one building or doing, mixing up the square footage among multiple buildings. So none of those are set in stone, but it's the concept of using that space for more office square footage. That would be part of a phase two in a future stage. What they're focused on is their phase one, to expand their open yard use. On their current location is that portion that's just above the portion in color. And they have a outdoor storage area as part of that current location. They're looking to expand that and what's looked at is phase one. That would also include a manufacturing, open air manufacturing area and then storage for some of their materials and their equipment. They have presented on the concept plan a eight-foot-tall precast concrete stone masonry wall that would go around the perimeter. On two sides of this addition, they would be adjacent to residential. So they are proposing to construct the entire length of that concrete wall in their phase one development, so the entire length along phase one and phase two, in the phase one development. The ordinance provided would allow for a reduction and required landscaping in their open storage area. As you can see on their site plan, it would be fully screened from public view, but it would not include new vegetation, new green space within those boundaries. Within their phase two, again, the eight-foot-tall concrete fence and then landscaping as shown on the site plan, which would include trees as shown. And on the bottom side closer to the phase two label is where the Pine Meadow subdivision would adjoin this part of the property. And then on the top side is where it would adjoin their current development. So landscaping is proposed as presented in addition to your standard landscaping requirements, off-street parking landscaping requirements, breaking up the concrete and parking spaces within the site. This is an example of the bridge, the material that's currently out there today in their development. And the concrete fence that they're proposing around the perimeter would be similar to this bridge construction that they've placed out there. Public notices were mailed out. We received two letters of support, one from a resident of Pine Meadow subdivision, in addition to the owners of the property. However, they are not here tonight. So if there are any questions, we'll answer them.
All right, thank you. Recognizing Councilmember Marulis.
Jennifer, in the packet that we received, PD 85 covers it all the way up to Cravens.
Correct.
I thought this was residential and they were talking about putting some multifamily there.
So that was the last zoning application involving PD 85 that came before you all. It was not successful. And so they were actually trying to rezone that, the same portion of land. And they weren't successful in that zoning. So PD 85 allows for office warehouse uses in the entire PD.
So they're not taking that whole entire lot?
No.
Okay, so that leaves that portion still as PD 85 for commercial.
Correct.
Okay. Thank you. Recognizing Councilmember Riley.
Thank you. And thank you, you answered most of my questions in that. The resident that gave a favorable, you know, support, I didn't see the letter in there.
It should be in the public hearing item. And so you should have both of those letters of support in there on that item.
Okay, okay. And then my other question is, just out of curiosity, what else can be developed for that particular land? I mean, I know it's on, has anybody else inquired about developing that land for something else? Other than warehousing?
The balance of PD 85? Not directly, but this kind of goes through the conversation previous that along South Cravens, we've seen a lot of office warehouse construction. So it's likely that that is what they'll be looking for it as. There was, Park 890 at one point was looking at it to do some supplemental uses there, but it was still in the office warehouse area.
Got you. My last question is, the photo that's in slide 54, is this a sample or is this actually what they're going to be putting up?
Of the masonry wall? This is actually the bridge that they have on their property today.
Yeah.
And so this is what they would use. This is as a construction company, they make all of these materials. And then they would construct it themselves. And so this is what they would model for the perimeter of the site.
Okay. And I just want to say, they have been really good, you know, business owners, very good neighbors. And I go over there and, you know, struggled in that area. I've taken code enforcement over there, I've taken economic development over there. And so they've been really consistent in keeping their area. Couple of incidents, you know, but very minor, nothing that the residents complained about. So I really like the fact that they've thought this project through and that they're implementing some of the things that I would normally be concerned about and they already addressed that. So thank you for that, Jennifer.
Recognizing Councilmember Emery.
Yeah, on one of the presentations, I think it was looking at phase one, you mentioned it was, there was an open area, open manufacturing area. That, to me, kind of implies noise and dust or smoke or, you know, whatever, you know, comes out of the manufacturing that's being done in that area. Is, can you kind of define what activities go on in that area? And does that promote or create a problem with noise and with air quality?
Sure. And the business owner and the applicant, they've been very cognizant of that and have responded to recommendations in terms of placement. So some of the iterations of their site plan had that portion. And it, on this site plan in phase one, it's the portion that has the circles on there. So the ordinance that you have has that area pushed as far away from the residential side as possible so that they would not be able to relocate that closer to the residential. And then they would have mechanisms in place as well to control for odor, sound, and noise. And so they have been responsive in that regard.
Okay, that's, that was my question. Thank you. Councilmember Boni, did you have anything?
I do have a question. You said there is a mechanism to control the odor. What is that?
Well, so this is open air where they would be processing like concrete and materials that they use in their business. So this isn't, this should not be an area that should cause too much odor in particular, more so the noise vibration. And so they do, they have a plan in place. We didn't attach it to the PD ordinance, but they have presented a plan in place to address that.
Okay, and what is that plan in place?
Okay. I would have to have them describe the specifics, but we can provide that for you all.
Okay, all right, thank you. All right, is there a motion? It's been a motion by Councilmember Brown Marshall, seconded by Councilmember Marulis. Let's go ahead and vote.
The motion carries unanimously.
Item 75.
75 is a public hearing to receive comments for or against a request by Dpeg Wicksburg LP to amend the rules and restrictions contained in section four of PD Plan Development District Number 117 pertaining to heightened area regulations, garage regulations, landscaping regulations, and fence regulations. And to the extent such zoning deviates from the future land use and character map of the comprehensive plan to provide for an amendment.
Okay, we'll now go ahead and open the public hearing for this item 7A5. City Secretary, do we have any requests to speak on this item?
No, Mr. Mayor, we do not.
Okay. If there's no further comments, we'll now go ahead and close the public hearing for 7A5. And 7A6.
An ordinance of the City of Missouri City, Texas, amending PD Plan Development District Number 117, describing the 24.45 acre tract of land within PD Plan Development District Number 117, referencing a site plan for such PD Plan Development District, providing for certain construction according to said plan, amending the zoning map of the City of Missouri City, providing for repeal, providing a penalty, providing for severability, and containing other provisions relating to the subject.
Thank you. Jennifer Thomas Gomez. Thank you, Jennifer Thomas Gomez.
Okay. All right, this is the territory at Missouri City Development off of Highway 6, just to the east of the Inspire community that's under construction. This PD allows for mixed use, residential or commercial along the Highway 6 frontage and multifamily to the rear of the property. This is the concept plan for the development, and you can see where that red kind of area is, is the commercial. The access between the commercial uses coming off of Highway 6 with multifamily development layout there. This is a PD that the multifamily development has actually gone through permit review and has been approved for permit review. And so the amendments that are being requested are straightforward. So I'm just going to go through the three amendments that they're requesting to this PD to allow for the multifamily development to move forward. They are requesting a amendment on density to allow for more than 24 dwelling units within a single building. They have building types that they have designed for the multifamily uses. Three of those building types, Building Types 3, 4, and 9, basically contain in excess of more than 24 units per building. And design-wise, what they did was designed it to have a firewall separation to effectively create two individual buildings as opposed to one single structure. So they're asking for relief to allow for their density to be increased per building. The recommendation is to approve. Again, these designs have been reviewed, have gone through the permit review process, have been reviewed in accordance with the building codes and fire codes. The revision would also have to go through that same process as well. However, the density, when we talk about the number of buildings, a lot of times that design is to limit massive kind of development structures that are housing, are trying to house a lot of people in a very small contained space. However, the designs of these buildings are consistent with other multifamily projects that have been developed. The second deviation that's being proposed is to reduce the amount of garages or covered parking. And what this image basically shows you are color codes black and yellow in areas where garages had been planned around the property. The code requires 50% of all minimum parking to be contained in covered parking. Covered parking would be garages and carports. And then the code further requires 25% of all required parking in garages. What the request is, is to reduce that by half. So they would still be providing garages as part of this development. Their request is just to reduce the amount of garages, covered parking, that's provided in this development. So they have provided it throughout, so there is still opportunity for those residents that would like to take part in a garage or use a garage, for them to use it no matter what building they're in, so they're not all clustered in one location, they are throughout the development. And the recommendation on the table is to approve that. Finally is the perimeter fencing. So again, this is a mixed-use development, so where, if you can see kind of the red outline on the plan there, everything above that is commercial or non-residential zoning. And so as has been discussed with previous cases tonight, and as you all are aware, typically you see the masonry walls to separate residential to non-residential. The request here is, and I don't know if you can see in the image presented on the screen, is to put wrought iron fencing with brick columns spaced out along the length of the wrought iron fencing along the perimeter of the residential area. Their ask is, since this is a unified development, to make this more cohesive and not blocked off, so the residential and the non-residential kind of play into each other in terms of the land use configuration. Additionally, with this, the commercial, the non-residential that would be closer to the residential are more office in use. And so the, you know, commercial, retail, restaurants, things like that are, they're looking at that closer to the Highway 6 portion of the site. So the recommendation before you is to approve that variance as well. This is just a summary on the notifications, but those are the three amendments that are being requested by the developer for this meeting.
Okay, thank you. We have Councilmember Emery.
One of the things that brought my attention was, I'm going to ask the question, there's a separation wall now between this development and Oakwick Forest?
It will be with Inspire, so this, this development won't touch Oakwick.
Okay.
So the Inspire community would be between this development, well, would be to the west of this development, and then Oakwick is on the other side of that community.
So this is not deviating from anything that was agreed to between Oakwick Forest and the developer?
Correct.
Okay. Second thing is, and maybe the fire chief is here, but I see it here where we're going to remove one fire, we're going to remove a firewall? Wasn't that one of the amendments?
So the amendment is, is, the zoning amendment portion is in addressing the firewall. However, the design of the firewall is to separate the building, so design-wise, it's more than one building. And so what the consideration is, is to allow for an increased number of units per building, so that the design can be modified. The fire code and the building codes would still be applicable, they wouldn't be able to vary from that, but it's just in the design of the building, it wouldn't be considered two buildings, it would be considered one.
Okay. So I guess my question is, and maybe you've already answered it, and the chief's here, is that by approving this amendment, would that create any kind of additional fire hazard or fire concerns, you know, should an event happen, fire event happen? And maybe I'm going back a little bit from, from old school, but, you know, I remember when there weren't any firewalls in some of the developments, like over on Fondrenette, and a fire got, you know, up above the attic and, you know, just went all the way down the whole string of homesites or apartments, if you will. So, you know, when you start talking about removing, you know, firewalls, yeah, it just raises, you know, a flag.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. In answer to that, so the building configuration is going to be something similar to what we see in the hometown of Missouri City, where that is technically and looks to be one building. However, there's firewall separation in that current building. Based on the building construction type, the size, the provision of having fire sprinkler systems, there's a lot of variables that could be had there, both in the building and the fire code, of how that building could be designed to make that applicable to our currently adopted code standards to make it not a hazard.
So from fire department perspective, this approval of that amendment wouldn't create any additional potential fire hazards or ability to fight, fight a fire that might start?
No, sir, they would still have to go through the design considerations and provisions we have adopted.
Very good, thank you. Okay, that's, that was, you send my questions.
Recognizing Councilmember Riley.
Thank you. Jennifer, thank you for the information again, very thorough, you answered a lot of my questions. I do have a couple. What was the, what was, what were the number of units that they had on record prior to requesting for the increase?
All right, excuse me, say that one more time.
How many, they were asking for increase, they having 24? What was it before?
So I believe two of the building types, 3 and 9, or 3 and 4, had 42 total units, and one of the building types had 48. And so the separation basically would put 24 or less units on either side of the separation.
Okay.
So this would remove the separation, and then two of the buildings would have a total of 42 units, one of the buildings would have a total of 48.
Okay, okay. What's the average size of the units?
That I don't know off the top of my head, if you can bring that back.
Okay. And there was, I mean, obviously there were no protests, nobody was, you know, not, had an issue with this particular, do they have to have arranged for any detention for this?
Yes, and in fact, that area in that big bold outline?
Which one?
Is all designated for detention purposes.
Which one?
So on the site plan, all of that area in that big, the dark colored outline.
Okay, that can, thank you, I appreciate that. Thank you, Mayor.
Recognizing Councilmember Boni.
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to state that, you know, we've had three public hearings and three actions that we were seeking to take on individuals seeking PDs. And I just wanted to make a point that as I'm supportive of all three of these, that we have to make sure that we're keeping the same standard across the board when we're making decisions. Because as I see it, all three of these potential opportunities that we voted on tonight all involve residential and all involve PDs. It just seems like, as I'm hearing the comments or seeing us move in the direction that for certain areas of town, we have a different standard or viewpoint based off of feelings or whatnot versus actual standard, a bona fide standard. I'm just trying to understand the difference between the last item we voted on and this one versus the first one. So I just would like to make sure that as we're making decisions to amend these zoning requests, that we have a standard that actually is consistent across the board, because I just don't see that we're doing that based off of our first vote. I just wanted to make that comment.
Thank you. Recognizing Councilmember Brown Marshall.
Thank you so much, Mayor. Jennifer, would you talk to the audience and I guess to council with regards with what's to the right of this proposed development?
To the right?
Mm-hmm.
And to the east is the Kroger Shopping Center.
Kroger Shopping Center. And then on the, to the left is going to be the new rental development that's already being built.
Correct, and that's also within the Plan Development District.
And that's also within the Plan Development District. I, I see a distinct difference between all three of these on tonight, and I'm thankful that they are PDs, because I get to vote individually in regards to each one of them. So I just wanted to put that out, because oftentimes we only get to see the snapshot of what's right before us. We don't get a chance to expand it all the way out to see everything around us, and I wish we could. So just maybe going in the future, if we could have that, like an expanded snapshot so that we could see everything that's around it, I think that would help us. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. So I guess I do have a question for Cedric. Cedric, when you're looking, looking at this development, the standards that we talk about, we're taking away so many bricks, now adding wrought iron to it, right? Is that the standard that we have been using? Or how, how does that go through? Or is it just for this project? The reason I ask is that going back to what Councilmember Boni was talking about, keeping the same standards everywhere. So...
I totally agree with you about having standards, but it's not in every location that we have this standard, where it's going to be iron or brick or masonry walls. So I totally agree about having standards across the board, so it'll be uniform and the city can look good.
Okay, so my, I guess my suggestion to you would be that when we have these type of development that's come across, when we are scaling back, now this is back to you, Jennifer, when we're scaling back from pretty much LC 3 mixed use, that, can you tell me that this was scaled back or no? Or this is the standard?
If it was scaled back?
Yeah, from, from having bricks and back to wrought iron and all that.
Well, I'd say part of, part of the difference is, is because it's a Plan Development District. And so Plan Development Districts, you can, you have a flexibility, and particularly if they're uniform, you know, Plan Development Districts are uniform. So there are some, some of the apartments in like the Sienna area, where you have like the Levy or, you know, the one at Trammell Fresno, you do have some wrought iron that's along the public street side of it, or where they're, you know, transitioned into other types of uses. So it's not atypical, but if you just took the standards, you know, as they exist, if this was multifamily in a multifamily district and commercial unrelated to that multifamily district, then the standards allow for that separation, so you have some protection and buffers between those, those two land uses.
Okay. All right. There's been a motion by Councilmember Brown Marshall, seconded by Mayor Proton Klauser. Seeing no one else on the queue, let's go ahead and vote.
The motion carries unanimously.
Thank you. Item 76B, 1.
B1, a public hearing to receive comments for or against proposed amendments to Chapter 14 Buildings and Building Regulations and Chapter 38 Fire Prevention and Protection, adopting the 2021 additions of the following international codes and provisions as published by the International Code Council. Building, residential, property maintenance, plumbing, energy conservation, mechanical, fuel, gas, existing buildings, swimming pool and spa, solar energy, and fire, adopting the 2023 addition of the National Electrical Code as published by the National Fire Protection Association.
I thank you. We'll now go ahead and open the public hearing for this item B1. City Secretary, do we have anyone requesting to speak on this item?
No, Mr. Mayor, there are no comments.
Okay, there's no further comments, we'll now go ahead and close the public hearing B1. And B2.
An ordinance of the City Council of the City of Missouri City, Texas, amending Chapter 14 Buildings and Building Regulations, adopting the 2021 additions of the following international codes and provisions as published by the International Code Council and as amended herein. Building, residential, property maintenance, plumbing, energy conservation, mechanical, fuel, gas, existing buildings, swimming pool and spa, and solar energy, adopting the 2020 addition of the National Electrical Code, as, I apologize, that should be 2023, as published by the National Fire Protection Association, adopting local amendments to the adopted codes, providing a penalty, providing for separability, providing an effective date, and making other provisions related to the subject.
Thank you. Jennifer Thomas Gomez.
Good evening, I don't have a presentation, but I will entertain any questions.
All right.
This is what was presented in the special meeting, and just to adapt the building codes.
All right, so there's been motion, calling for motion. We have a motion by Councilmember Boni, seconded by Councilmember Merulis, seeing no one else on the queue, let's go ahead and vote.
The motion carries unanimously.
Okay, thank you. B3.
An ordinance of the City of Missouri City, Texas, amending Chapter 38 Fire Prevention and Protection of the Missouri City Code, adopting the 2021 addition of the International Fire Code and making amendments thereto, providing an effective date, providing for repeal, providing a penalty, and providing for separability.
Thank you. There's a presentation by Mario Portita, Fire Chief. Go ahead, sir.
Good evening, Mayor and Council.
Excuse me.
I do not have the presentation. This is the same item that we worked out in the special meeting.
Okay.
Be happy to answer some questions.
Thank you. There's been a motion by Councilmember Boni, seconded by Mayor Proton Klauser, seeing no one else on the queue, let's go ahead and vote.
The motion carries unanimously.
All right, thank you. Thank you, Chief. Item number 8, our Appointments, 8A, Consideration and Possible Action, the Tax Increment Reinvestment Zone Board Number 1 Member Appointments and Reappointments. Presentation by Crystal Roan, City Secretary.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Tonight I'm asking for your consideration and the reappointments for members for the TERS Number 1, for Position 1, Vicky McBride, Position 3, Rosalynn Thomas, Position 5, Sherri Jones. These three incumbents have agreed to serve, continue to serve if council so desires. All of these incumbents have met the 75% or more requirement for attending meetings, and there are no conflicts of interest. We do have two vacancies on this board for Position 2 and Position 6. However, we've received one applica, well, two applications for this board, and we are currently in the process of vetting those applications. So tonight I ask that you consider the reappointments.
All right, thank you. We have, Councilmember Brown Marshall?
No, she answered the question.
Okay, all right. So it's been a motion by Councilmember Riley, seconded by Mayor Proton Klauser, seeing no one else on the queue, let's go ahead and vote. Seeing no one else on the queue, let's go ahead and vote.
The motion carries unanimously.
Thank you. Item eight, B, consideration and possible action. The tax increment, reinvestment zone, board number two, member appointment and reappointments. Uh, Crystal Rome, City Secretary.
Mayor and Council, I ask that you consider, uh, reappointing, um, Gloria Lucas to position one, Frank Hester to position three, and Buford Jurica to position five. We did not receive any applications for this particular, um, board.
Okay. Thank you. I do have a, a quick question. Have we, have you talked to all the people that has been getting re, uh, back on?
Yes, sir. All three have agreed to serve again if council so desires.
All right, thank you. We have a motion by Councilmember Riley, seconded by Mayor Proton Clouser. Uh, we have a question by, uh, recognizing Councilmember Boni.
Yes, uh, thank you so much. Uh, so now that we've adopted these new rules as to how we're gonna function process-wise, so is this gonna be applicable, uh, to TERS positions?
Yes.
Uh, because I, I know we didn't do that for these three.
Right. Moving forward, we will follow the new process and procedures adopted by council. Because of the time constraints with, um, the board appointments ending, um, their term, I'm sorry, their terms expiring December thirty-first of twenty twenty-three, um, we move forward with providing, um, these reappointments. But moving forward, we will follow the process and procedure.
So these will be two-year terms?
Yes, sir.
And so they'll expire, so they'll have an additional, uh, little timeframe, but they'll, they'll expire in twenty-five, this, these ones?
These that will be, these that are being considered tonight will expire in twenty twenty-six.
And so we'll be considering the even numbers for this year?
Yes, sir, in December.
And you'll have that process implemented for these?
Yes, sir.
For those, I mean, all right.
Yes.
And a quick point of clarification, you all do need to also appoint the chairperson for each board as well.
At this time? At this time?
It will be placed on the future agenda.
Correct.
I was just checking you back. Thank you. All right, so, uh, motion by Councilmember Riley, seconded by Mayor Proton Clouser. Seeing no one else on the queue, let's go ahead and vote.
The motion carries unanimously.
Okay. Item eight, C, consideration and possible action. The tax increment, re-invest- reinvestment zone, board number three, member appointment and reappointments. Crystal Rome, City Secretary.
Again, Mayor and Council, um, these are for reappointments to TERS board number three. Um, and I forgot to mention on the last board that these, um, as well as the last board, um, did meet the requirements of the seventy-five percent and more, uh, of attendance at the meetings. And all have agreed to continue to serve if council so desires. Position one, Robert Hodge. Position three, um, Shadrat Chachawala. Position five, Joyce Rayner. And position nine, Sharon Jurica.
Okay. Uh, recognizing Councilmember Brown Marshall.
Thank you. Um, City Attorney, um, I just have one question. Do we see any type of conflict with Chachawala serving on TERS, or on this one and on planning and zoning? Is there any conflict?
Technically, no, because this board is not, they are not public officials.
Okay.
Therefore, technically, there is not.
Okay. Thank you so much.
That, that was my question, uh, that Councilwoman Brown Marshall asked about if we had made a determination or decision that, uh, if you served on P and Z, does that, uh, eliminate you from any other positions? I know that, uh, uh, TERS member Lucas was also on P and Z at the time, uh, simultaneously, but I didn't know if we made a change with that. Maybe that's something that we need to consider moving forward.
Okay. So there's been a motion by Councilmember Riley, and seconded by Councilmember Brown Marshall. Seeing no one else on the queue, let's go ahead and vote.
The motion carries unanimously.
Okay, thank you. Item nine is Resolutions, nine A.
A resolution of the City Council of the City of Missouri City, Texas, approving the submission of a grant application through the fiscal year twenty twenty-five, General Victim Assistance Program, to the Criminal Justice Division of the Office of the Governor through the Houston Galveston Area Council, and containing other provisions related thereto.
All right, thank you. We have Tamila Burnett, Crime Victim Liaison. Thank you.
Yes. Good evening, Mayor.
Good evening, good evening.
Councilmembers. This grant is offered to the Houston area, um, I'm sorry, Houston Galveston Area Council for general victim assistance. Um, this will be the fourteenth year that we've applied for this grant, and this year, though, they're requiring a twenty percent match. Um, there is an eighty percent that's coming from HGAC. That will be sixty-eight thousand, one hundred twenty-four. And the match for us would be seventeen thousand, thirty-one. So the total grant amount will be eighty-five thousand, one fifty-five, twelve.
Okay. Well, thank you. Um, I don't see anyone else on the queue, but thank you so much for coming and presenting.
Okay.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
All right, we have a motion by Councilmember Emery, seconded by Councilmember Riley. Seeing no one else on the queue, let's go ahead and vote.
The motion carries unanimously.
All right, thank you. Item nine, B.
A resolution of the City Council of the City of Missouri City, Texas, adopting a meeting room use policy, providing for repeal, and providing an effective date.
All right, we have a presentation by Jason Mangum, our Assistant City Manager. Go ahead, sir.
Good mor- good mor- good afternoon, good morning. It's like I've been here all night. Good evening, Mayor and Council. Um, it's a pleasure to be with you. Uh, this was originally on the, uh, special meeting to, uh, get your feedback, so, uh, I'm, I'm happy to get your feedback, or if it's, uh, satisfactory, um, go ahead and, uh, approve it tonight. This is a meeting room use policy. Uh, I would say update, but really is an overhaul from the previous meeting room use policy, which was, uh, created in, uh, two thousand and twelve. Uh, so it's been a, a good dozen years since we've, uh, addressed this. I wanted to highlight some of the differences between the two thousand and twelve policy and the twenty twenty-four, uh, policy to kinda, uh, outline some, some key points. Uh, in the twenty twelve policy, there was multiple points of contact with the cities, depending on which facility you wanted to utilize. Uh, there was no outlined facility rules or policies and procedures related to, um, using our facilities at a, a free or reduced cost. And there was limited to, uh, certain groups, um, homeowners associations, governmental agencies, uh, and then very specific, uh, groups, the Missouri City ARP, Business Alliance, Texas Parkway Alliance, Missouri City Place and Fire Auxiliary, uh, Friends of Missouri City Parks, Missouri City Green. Some of these groups don't even exist anymore, or go by different names. In the new policy, um, there will be an annual application process to qualify for free or reduced, uh, rooms. Uh, there'll be rules and, and usage agreements, uh, tied, tied to those. Um, we're expanding our qualifying groups. We're calling two groups, core partners. Those are homeowners associations and governmental agencies, and then service area partners, which are any five oh one C three, um, group in Missouri City. Uh, and then we added some additional fees for staffing and cleaning if we incur those costs. We wanna make sure that we are at least covering our costs. Um, these were the, uh, facilities that were permitted in the twenty twelve policy, which was the Recreation and Tennis Center, the Community Center, Quail Valley City Center, Public Safety Headquarters, and City Hall Meeting Room One. Nobody here knew what City Hall Meeting Room One was anymore, so we figured it was time for a new policy. Twenty twenty-four policy, uh, we've limited that to the Recreation and Tennis Center, uh, the multipurpose rooms, um, and the conference room there, as well as the Community Center, the auditorium, the big room downstairs, uh, the multipurpose room, which is, uh, uh, the room two, two-ten upstairs, and then, um, the, the meeting room. So we are, we are expanding, um, what's available over there at that, um, facility. This is what's currently being used, uh, by, um, our community. These are over the Quail Valley City Center. Um, we are, again, removing that from the free use, uh, policy as an enterprise fund. We feel like it's important to, uh, make sure that we're utilizing those, uh, funds to, um, make sure that it's an enterprise fund, and, uh, especially since there's plenty of space, uh, nearby. Uh, these are the current organizations that are using our, um, um, facilities at, at no cost. Uh, this is the, the proposal for fees, so our core, core partners, which are government agencies and our, uh, HOAs, continue to use, um, facilities for free. Um, and then our service area partners, um, we have peak and non-peak, and if it's in a, um, if it's in a, a non-peak, they get a fifty percent discount, uh, and if it's in a peak time, then they get a twenty-five percent discount. Uh, again, if there's incurring staffing fees, so if there's any reservations that happen outside of when we already have activities and people and staff there, um, there'll be a twenty-five dollar an hour staffing fee and then, uh, a cleaning fee of sixty-five dollars per reservation. That's just what it costs for us to bring in an extra cleaning. Um, we did some calculations and we looked at the Recreation and Tennis Center and, uh, the Community Center, and if this would've been in place last year, we would've had an additional eight thousand, three hundred and fifty dollars in, um, additional, in additional revenue. Um, with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions about the proposal, um, and, uh, I have great staff that worked on this with me. We've worked with several different departments, um, and, um, would be happy to answer any questions.
All right, thank you so much. I'm going to start off with, uh, Mayor Proton Clouser.
Yes, Jason, thank you so much. Um, I had a question about the, um, item ten, the security fees. Did we look at the security fees for, uh, the officers that are required to be, uh, on the premises for certain events? And did we increase those fees? Cause the standard rate is forty dollars per hour, and then the holiday rate is fifty dollars an hour. Now, I'm not an officer and don't work extra jobs, but if, I, I wanna make sure that that is in line with what is currently being, um... Yes. Thank you, Chief Harris.
So for events such as the City Center and things like that are paid for by city, um, it is on the lower end. Um, we did poll some of the other, uh, areas such as Sugarland. They just recently went up, and they're right around fifty dollars an hour, forty-five to fifty.
Okay, so the standard rate...
Go ahead.
The standard rate that we have is forty dollars per officer. Are you saying that that is below rate?
For some job. It, it just depends. Um, some private events, people are willing to pay top money just to have insurance officers there. So it's kinda all over the board. We're not, by far, we're not the lowest at forty. We're not the highest. Um, it's kinda middle ground, um, right now. And, you know, obviously, we'd like to be hired, and it's something we've talked about, and we'll possibly propose at a later time.
And these rules are all consistent with our current regular rules for utilizing the facilities.
Okay. Okay. Um, is there anything that we can do to adopt a higher fee for the officers that, so that we can be competitive and make sure officers are compensated?
So that would be, if I may, that would be a separate item.
Okay.
Um, this is just, this policy is specifically for meeting, uh, the meeting room use policy, and it incorporates the existing policy for what we pay, uh, our officers. But that would be a separate discussion that the city could have.
Okay. Okay. Can we bring that back at a, at a later time? Okay.
Absolutely.
Thank you, Chief.
Thank you. Recognizing Councilmember Brown Marshall.
Thank you. So Jason, City Hall Meeting Room Number One used to be on the first floor of, over that way. And so most of the HOAs on this side, end of town, used to use that room a long time ago. So going now to the current, um, rooms that are gonna be made available, um, it's a reduction, honestly, in space. So I was curious if you could talk to us about why the Police Department was removed as a meeting location? And, um, in terms of the locations that are gonna be used at the Community Center, how readily available are those rooms, or will there be difficulty with scheduling?
Uh, there, as of right now, there, there would be no difficulty in scheduling. Uh, we were looking at our, um, our KPIs in Parks and Rec, and one of those is how often are those rooms being used? And, and we have some, you know, we'd like to see more use. And so there, there's not, not really any, um, uh, issue with, with scheduling. Um, we, we did actually add more space on this side of town with adding the upstairs of the Community Center. Um, that, that, that's actually more space on this side of town. Uh, we just felt instead of having three, three facilities on heart right that are available, and especially with the, the PD, um, then they have to make sure they have somebody there to unlock it. And, and again, if the cleaning crew has already been in, then, then there, there's, there's a mess in there, then they have to bring their cleaning crew back. We just felt that it was easier to use the rec center, which is literally a mile down the street, where we're already open till ten o'clock at night. We're already paying that cleaning crew to come in after that, and so it just made more sense to kinda streamline things.
It makes sense. I just have one, um, last question for you. Um, I didn't understand the listed user groups per location. So all of the ones that were currently at Quail Valley Sen- City Center, like garden crew?
These are people that are currently using our facilities for free.
Okay.
At Quail Valley City Center, which we were proposing that they would need to go to the rec center or the Community Center. Those are the, the groups that are currently using, um, space for free.
Okay.
Um, so the HOAs would continue to get free use, the five oh one C threes would get the discounted, uh, rental.
But at a different location?
At a different location.
No one is gonna be here at City Center anymore?
Correct. That requires staff time, overtime, additional overtime later in the week, different things like that. We're trying to make sure that we're breaking even with that.
Okay, I'm good with that. I just wanted to make sure that they were, were not allowed to use it. Thank you so much.
Recognizing Councilmember Riley.
Thank you. Um, great presentation, and thank you to all the, the departments that worked together with you on this. Um, I have a question in regards to, um, the governmental entities that, they'll still get these, um, the opportunity to use the facilities for free. Does that include schools?
Yep.
Okay, I want, that's my biggest thing.
Yeah, we actually have an additional agreement with the schools for shared use, um, uh, facilities. So that, they're being double covered here, yes.
Okay, cause, no, my favorite schools, um, use the facilities for their bank, we just wanna make sure that provision was covering them. And then are there limitations on how many times they can use our facilities at no cost?
Uh, yeah, so government agencies have unlimited, um, ability, uh, because you don't know what's going to happen in the government agency if a mud has an emergency meeting or something like that.
Okay.
And the five oh one C threes has a, you know, probably, off the top of your head, is it once per month, or, or a lot of these are once per month?
Okay. Good evening. So homeowners associations and the, the service area partners are both once per month. Um, and part of the application process will be listing their requested dates, um, so that we can go ahead and confirm those up to six months in advance, so that they can plan accordingly.
So would they have to schedule their appointments, like, every single month? Or can they go ahead and schedule them out for the year?
They can do up to six months in advance. Um, so, you know, when they first submit their application, they can schedule six months. Um, when they're in our facilities at the end of that meeting, they can just add another one at, at the end each time. Um, that's, that also allows for us to plan for programs and growth, um, in our facilities. Um, so basically, the only people that we'll be able to reserve ahead of them is our programs run by the Parks and Recreation Department, um, and then they would be allowed, and then our private renters after that, so...
So, and that leads me into my next question. So what if they're, um, scheduled to meet on that particular day in one of our facilities, and we have a city program that we need that, that space? Are they moved to another location, or do they lose their date altogether?
Um, hopefully, it's rare that it's that last minute. Uh, I've only seen it happen once or twice in my five years, but, um, typically, we're able to move, relocate our items. But if it is something last minute that the city needs, we would either offer them a different room at the same facility, um, or the, you know, if they were here at the Community Center, offer them at the rec center, um, and then as a last resort, reschedule them to, to their, you know, convenience from there.
And same question. What if it's someone that's wanting to pay for the use of that room that we are utilizing them at no cost? Again, does the same method apply, or do they have to be moved to another location so that we can receive that revenue?
So once the, um, core partner, service area partner, once their reservation is in our system, it's set. Um, private renters, we're, it's no longer available.
Okay.
Um, so that would be set completely from there. The only reason we would, um, have to reschedule or move them to a different facility is if there was a, um, natural disaster, think, something like that, or if, you know, the people in this room deem that the city has to have that room for something.
Okay. And then, thank you, Danielle. So my question under, um, it says Agenda Item four B, um, on page five, it says qualify groups. It says qualified groups may not conduct the following activities during their approved use of a Missouri City facility for profit business, commercial, campaign, activities, private instruction, fundraising. Can you explain how that particular component works? Is this only if they're wanting to use it for, at no cost?
At no or reduced cost, yes. So if they want to do a candidate forum, they would have to pay regular, regular, uh, um, rates for that.
So in, in previous, we've had some, um, nonprofit organizations have done those. Were they not paid then?
Well, at, at, um, previously nonprofit organizations would just rent normally unless they were listed on that, on that thing.
Oh, okay. Okay. All righty. Thank you.
I do have a couple of questions. So in a nutshell, you basically told us that last year, if we were to have these in place, we would have had around 8,000 some change. That would have been, uh, uh, lost revenue, but it would have been, that's what we would have made. With that being said, part two is when you go back to the list of HOAs and not, you know, nonprofit that you can use this, are you opening this as to everybody or is just only those on the list?
No, um, all, all 501(c)(3)'s that serve Missouri City, um, would be eligible. And that was one of the things that I'll also do is we have this community event participation agreement. So if they're not on this meeting or news policy, it would typically have to go through this process of, you know, applying to get fees waived. This makes it much, much simpler for the, for the nonprofits because if they qualify, it's, it's automatic, right? They, they fill out an application once per year, um, check to make sure that they qualify. And then if they want to use them, that, then they can use it. So it's going to simplify the process and allow us to be way more efficient for anybody that wants, uh, reduced rentals.
Sure. What about HOA meetings and things, uh, HOA that wants to rent, um, same process?
Yeah. Yes. HOAs would have to apply. Um, their application is much simpler. It's just basically giving us the contact information for that HOA. Um, and then, um, and then they would be qualified to, to, um, it just makes us, allows us to, to verify that they're an HOA and they're active and that they have a, that they have officers.
So any HOA in our city, if they want to use this space, they can?
Yes.
With that policy. Is it first come, first served or is it they lock in for a whole year?
Six months. They could lock in for six months, but it would be those that got their application in on time, then they would schedule it. And if there was, you know, conflicting, we would work, try to work with the, them individually. Yeah.
Individually making sure. So that means if we have a, a city event or anything like that, that requires for us to use that space or ends up needing that space, then we will, or the city will find a way to move whoever that was scheduled within the six months?
Yeah, like Danielle was saying, that's, that's extremely rare. I mean, that's actually our policy for anybody that's using our space. I think someone could have a wedding planned and the city has the right to, and we would never do that. Um, but we do have that right to, to move any renter, whether it's a full price rent or a discount rent or free rent.
Okay. All right. Thank you. It's been a motion by Councilmember Boni, seconded by Councilmember Brown Marshall. Seeing no one else on the queue, let's go ahead and vote.
The motion carries unanimously.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you, Jason.
I have number 10, our council comments. We'll go ahead and start our council comments with our large council member, Sonia Brown Marshall.
Okay. Thank you so much, Mayor. Um, seems like it's been a long two weeks, but we're here. So had an opportunity to attend the Greater Houston Builders Association's annual, um, economic forecast. It was very well attended, probably over a thousand attendees in place. Um, it's very, very good. It was nice to hear, um, different strategists speak on the way that they think the current economy is going to move. And in particularly, I was, uh, most impressed with a gentleman by the name of Scott Davis of Location Strategy LLC. Um, and he particularly spoke about finding different locations that matches what cities need, what their needs are. So that was extremely, um, encouraging to hear him talk on some of his topics. And one thing in particular that I learned at the, um, conferences at San Antonio, but strange that they were mentioned here earlier on tonight in one of the other presentations, is that they made a, um, a major move to increase the different types of housing, uh, availability that they can have for their citizens. And Lennar came in with a product that literally costs about 135 to 185,000 dollars, which we don't see homes cost that right now anymore. And those homes literally range anywhere from about 350 square feet to about 650 square feet. But when the product hit the ground, there was a line down the street and it sold out. So it was just encouraging to see that there are other options out there. And so when I start looking at these little areas, like what we spoke about earlier, um, with regards to is it going to be homes on the street? Is it going to be warehouses or what is it going to be? There's so much more opportunity out there for us. So I'm going to continue to engage the group when I can to go out and listen to things that they have and continue to bring that feedback, um, to everyone here. Um, the Fort Ben Chamber Chairman's Gala was amazing. It really, really was. We had a great time. I got an opportunity to be there with some of my colleagues and, um, you know, to honestly see that the chairman's, uh, tarch was actually passed to now a chairwoman. So it was very, very nice to see that. I look forward to going to that event every year. And the last thing I wanted to comment on is Happy Black History Month. I look forward to seeing all of the citizens out at all of the events that are going to be going on, um, over the entire month. And I learned something on Saturday at our kickoff event, and that's that, um, most cities around us, they only have or maybe acknowledge one day for the month, for Black History Month. But I'm thankful that we have a team here that acknowledges it all month long. So thank you, and I look forward to seeing you guys at all of the events. Check our socials. Thanks.
Thank you. Recognizing, um, a large council position number two, Mayor Pro Tem Lynn Clouser.
Yes. Happy Black History Month to everybody. Um, I had a chance to attend our weekly farmer's market. Um, and if you have an opportunity, please go and support. I saw, um, our, uh, Parks Director, Donnie Hayes and his wife. Uh, we were about to fight over the Brussels sprouts, but I ended up winning for the last Brussels sprouts. Uh, but, um, it's a, it's a weekly farmer's market and, uh, really a lot of great artisans. So we can just go out and support, um, and keep those local artisans in business. Hats off to the Missouri City Green Team for a successful electronics, uh, recycling event and for all they do, uh, in and around the city. I had the opportunity to be a panelist for the Guys and Dolls, great group of the Missouri City Sugar Land Chapter of Jack and Jill, along with State Representative Ron Reynolds, Judge Tamika Carter, DA Brian Middleton and Constable Smith to discuss our, our pathways to the positions we serve in. I attended the Literacy Council of Fort Ben's Party with a Purpose at A Ling's to tease up their March fundraiser event called Reading Between the Lines, which I'll be emceeing. Each participant brought a $25 gift card to donate for their upcoming event. I attended the Fort Ben Chambers, uh, Gala, uh, where our 2023 Chair King, uh, Banjari, he, I, I said the same thing, passed the torch to, uh, Kiara Suggs as the 2024 Chairwoman. We had a great time. Um, we just, we, we danced the night away. Um, and, uh, we were able to, um, fellowship with other municipalities. So it was, it was a good time. Um, I attended the Black History Event Kickoff, uh, that was hosted by the Edison Arts Foundation in Missouri City. I was also honored to, to so, to serve as a judge for the Poetry Slam Contest and my daughter served as one of the kids' judges. That was an amazing event. It was, it was tough judging, but it was amazing and I look forward to, uh, coming back next year. And I wanted to remind everybody about the upcoming Small Business Mixer. And this, um, this mixer is going to be, uh, sponsored by the Prime Wave Federal, Federal Credit Union on February 13th at 6:30 at the Quail Valley City Center. And also want to remind everybody about, uh, Coffee with Leadership at 8:00 AM in the new Public Safety Annex located, uh, in the shopping center with Kroger. And that concludes my comments.
Thank you. Recognizing District A Councilmember Monica Riley.
Thank you. Um, it was a very busy month, um, in my birthday month, but I tried to make as much as I could. Um, I serve on the, uh, campus-based leadership team, uh, called CPAC at Hunter's Glen Elementary. So it was great to, uh, talk to a lot of the campus leadership about the student data that's taking place, some of the improvements and the strides that they've made, um, in their, on their campus. Also had an opportunity to go to our kickoff, uh, Black History, um, where Troy and Charity Carter and Donnie, our Parks Directors, worked so closely together to make sure that we have a month-long of great activities, um, for Black History Month. Um, the Fort Ben Chamber of Commerce Gala, Chairman's Gala was awesome. Um, I didn't see my council women out there on the dance floor, but it's okay. Um, yeah, I was still in, in the other room trying to fix, fix my feet. But, uh, thank you so much to the 2023 King for his leadership and congratulations to Kiara Suggs, the new 2024 Chairwoman and first African-American woman to be appointed to that seat in Black History Month. So hats off to you, Kiara. Uh, and then also want to, uh, say congratulations to Ms. Bernie Kelly. Uh, she, she's a friend to Missouri City. She received the Outstanding Texan Award from Senator Miles, House District, uh, 13. And, um, many of us were out there to celebrate her at her church, uh, first, uh, new, new faith church. And so it was just wonderful to see the show of love to support her for receiving this amazing award. Uh, we had a chance to go by Pastor and First Lady, uh, Fannie Young's, uh, church after service was over, sit and chat with them as they celebrate their pastor's anniversary at Missouri City Baptist Church. Uh, congratulations to Sonia, uh, Santi, one of our Missouri City residents who retired from the pinnacle after 10 years. She was the, uh, driving force behind a lot of the layout of that facility where a lot of our Missouri City residents are 55 and older, go over there to participate in activities. Congratulations to Colony Cross's HOA New Board Members, Dr. Cheryl Sterling and Former Mayor Ford. Um, they were inducted or voted in as the new board HOA presidents this past week. Um, also want to send out our condolences and thoughts and prayers to former Mayor Ford, uh, the loss of her mother. Please keep her in your thoughts and your prayers, as well as Shad Bogany, um, went to his father, his mother's funeral this past weekend as well. And as I close, I want to say thank you to everyone that came out to my birthday party. Thank you so much, Councilmember Floyd Emery, uh, for bearing with the, the huge crowd and, um, and just thank you so much for your support. I got rave reviews. Everybody was so excited to see you. And so just thank you so much for your prayer. They really were. They were talking about, hey, that's the mayor. The Mayor for Pro Tem from last year and, uh, council members. So thank you so much. Uh, you definitely were highlighted, um, at that event. So that concludes my announcements.
All right. Thank you. Recognizing, uh, Councilmember District B, Jeffrey Elboni.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, first of all, happy birthday again, Councilmember Riley.
Thank you.
We, we are blessed to be, uh, on this side to celebrate another trip around this side. So happy birthday.
Thank you.
I want to thank, uh, you, Mayor Alakat, for inviting to join you and the emergency management team during the weather-related event we experienced a few weeks ago. Uh, we have a solid team, uh, staff that's always on the ready, uh, when it comes to, uh, any emergency-related events here in the city of Missouri City. So thank you all for all that you do, especially our public works, uh, team, and our police and fire. Uh, uh, HGAC Board Meeting, uh, and Annual Meeting, uh, attended those. Uh, I want to thank Councilmember Emery and, uh, City Manager and Public Works Director, uh, Shashi Kumar for coming and, uh, being in attendance. I also attended the Houston Livestock Show and Rodeo Black Heritage Committee Annual Scholarship Gala, which is always a great opportunity to raise funds. I saw Mayor Pro Tem Clouser out, uh, talking about cutting the rug, you know? She was, she was out there as well. Um, also we had a board and commission ad hoc committee meeting, final. Uh, boards and commissions, ad hoc committee meeting, uh, myself, Mayor Pro Tem Clouser and Councilmember Riley. Also we had our Texas Parkway Park Right Corridor Advisory Committee, uh, uh, with Councilmember Riley and our, uh, members. Also attended the Fort Ben Mayor and Council Association's, uh, monthly dinner in the city, the big city of Pleak, uh, along with Councilmember Emery. Uh, also attended the Fort Ben County State of Justice Lunch. The Fort Ben County, hosted by Fort Ben County DA Brian Middleton. It was an inaugural event, a grand affair. Uh, attended with Mayor Alakat, of course, uh, our, our new, uh, police chief, who was also acknowledged Brandon Harris at the event. And Councilwoman Riley also was in attendance. Uh, wanted to congratulate Pastor Dennis Young, uh, on Missouri City Baptist Church's 32nd anniversary. I attended the week prior, uh, because I knew I wasn't going to be available last Sunday. But, uh, I always enjoy, uh, fellowshipping with him and his, uh, his, his people. I also attended the MUD 26 Board Meeting. Uh, I want to thank Council, uh, I mean, City Manager Jones, as well as, uh, Public Works Director Shashi Kumar for helping to, um, move that, uh, that, that needle forward. Uh, lastly, I just wanted to, uh, thank, uh, the Communication Department for the Black History Month Kickoff Celebration, uh, video that I was able to, uh, do. The, the, uh, videos will be forthcoming from all of my council colleagues. But, uh, we were able to do one for the kickoff celebration. Lastly, I just want to, uh, acknowledge Black History Month, which was originally Black History Week by Carter G. Wilson. Uh, it was done, uh, basically to remember President Abraham Lincoln, who was the 16th president and who wished the Emancipation Proclamation, as well as President Douglas, one of the most prominent 19th century black abolitionists, authors, orators and civil rights trailblazers of all time. So, thank you.
Thank you. Recognizing Councilmember District C, Anthony Morales.
Yeah, Mayor Pro Tem spoke about, uh, Missouri City Greens. I want to give some more information. So they collected, uh, over 27,000 pounds of electronics, uh, which is a whole entire 18-wheeler. Uh, there were 475 cars that showed up. They actually outgrew the Public Safety Headquarters and held it at the Freedom Center. And so I want to thank Pastor Greg for hosting us there. Um, one fact that I want everyone to know, Missouri City Greens is a nonprofit. They actually spent 11 grand of their money to host that event. So for those who support the Missouri City Green, there's also financial support that they can use. Um, so, uh, Missouri City Warrants are coming up on February 15th, the day after Valentine's Day. So you better buy your wife some flowers and pay your tickets or else we're coming. And then, um, Joe's, welcome back. You're the boomerang. You came back to us. Uh, we, we are really fortunate to have you and our department really will, uh, do well with you here. And Happy Black History Month. Uh, I saw the flyers and all the things that are going to be happening. To your point, we lead in this and I'm proud to be a part of it.
Thank you. Recognizing Councilmember of District D, Floyd Emery.
Uh, well, I, I want to acknowledge that I did attend the, uh, uh, Councilmember Riley's 3:00 birthday party and campaign. Mountain move and...
Yeah, we got that. We got that.
And by the way, all the accolades that they may have, it was, they, towards me, wasn't because of dancing. I mean, you talk about dancing, they know how to do it, uh, at that meeting or at that, at gathering. Yeah. Uh, I, I spoke at, uh, the Quail Valley Proud's, uh, annual, uh, meeting. They had around 80, uh, or so there. And, uh, they brought, uh, a, a lot of, uh, not, uh, understanding and, uh, programs that, uh, Quail Valley Proud will be, uh, supporting. I, uh, also, um, attended, uh, kickoff, uh, at the, uh, Palmer Elementary School. They're trying to develop and establish a butterfly garden. So they're working with, uh, the Quail Valley Garden Club to put that together. Uh, it was held at the, uh, elementary school and there must have been, uh, 30 or 40 adults and probably the same number of kids. So they're, uh, anxious to get started and, uh, I, I think it's something that, uh, maybe we can get, uh, Paul and, uh, you know, some of the, uh, folks from, uh, the, uh, Arbor, uh, Arbor Trail to maybe, um, provide some presentation at some point in town. Um, and I attended the HGAC Annual Board Meeting with my, uh, uh, my colleague, uh, Councilmember, uh, Boni and, uh, City Manager and, uh, and, um, our Public Works Director. So, uh, it was, uh, something that, uh, was, uh, well, uh, well-attended. And, uh, uh, congratulations to Black History Month and, uh, I hope to be able to attend as many of the, uh, events as possible. But every time I look up, uh, they're putting new events on the calendar. So I'm not sure I'll be able to stay up with it, but I will try. So that's my, uh, my presentation.
All right. Thank you. Thank you. All right. I know it's hard to land a follow. Um, all right. Um, all right. Um, man, I'm lost here. Hold on. First of all, talking about the Black History Month, as someone stated here, it's usually every other city's one day and is one proclamation. And we have a whole month of activities. Uh, thanks to our partner this year, uh, which is Edison Arts Foundation. Uh, so we have been able to now move forward with our plannings and all that. But I want to take this opportunity to thank, um, a couple of departments, Communications, uh, IT, and then of course, Donnie Hayes and the Parks Department for your hard work. I know you guys were just standing in line, all four of you, changing out the venues left and right. Thank you so much for doing that. Really appreciate it. Um, I did attend, I'm not gonna speak to everything that others spoke about me attending, but I had the pleasure of attending two career days, one at Lexington Creek Elementary, and the other one is a brand-new school, which is Sonal Bhuchar. And both of those events were really great. All the kids wanted to know was how much money I made. Not gonna say how much it is, but I think you would know. Um, Seventy-Fifth Republic Day of India was on January twenty-sixth, so with the invitation from the Council General of India and, uh, his lovely wife, um, myself, and all other elected officials, almost everyone from nearby cities were able to attend, so thank you for that. Um, Election Law Seminar. So the, the city held an election law seminar with the City Secretary's Office. Thank you, Crystal. I know that it was a great group of people that turned out, um, and I had the pleasure of walking them, welcoming them to this. Uh, Joes, uh, in planning, welcome back. I know in one time before, I had the opportunity to serve with you as well. Jennifer, I don't know where she's at, but Jennifer, great job. I, I, and I just want to be on record saying that there's been a motion that people are leaving Missouri City. Well, I'm not sure about you, but they're coming back. All right, I just wanted to be on that record for that. Uh, lastly, um, Councilmember Brown Marshall and I had, uh, honored to attend, uh, someone in the community, JaPaula Kemp's daughter, Ashley Stevens, passed away. Um, accident, uh, was right, uh, and the funeral was last, last week, Friday, so we both had the pleasure. So keep JaPaula Kemp, who's a, with, been in our community for so long, and her daughter, Ashley, uh, Stevens, in your thoughts and prayers. Thank you. Item number eleven, our closed executive sessions. Uh, do we, we don't have any closing, no, we don't have anything. All right. Item number thirteen, our, uh, adjourned, the time is eight forty-three PM. The City Council will adjourn.